Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for Greeley Evans School District Six. Today is August 26, 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance to our Flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Lemon, will you call the roll force, please?
Director Azari.
Director Bentley.
Present.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Present.
Director Mash.
Present.
Director Matthews.
Present.
Director Norwood.
Present.
Director Sullivan.
Present.
All board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Again, welcome to our Board of Education meeting tonight, and we are glad that each of you is joining us, and we appreciate those of you who are joining us tonight. And just a few updates from our board before we go forward in our meeting and to let everyone know, and we don't always update everybody on our work session, but tonight, we got a work session report from our Safety and Security Team. And for those that don't know, our Safety and Security Team has undergone some transitions recently. Our Chief of Security, Chief Gates, retired, and he has been replaced by Chief, now Wade Corliss. And we appreciate him. And our Assistant Director, Brad Loopke, moved up to Director of Safety and Security, and then we've hired an Assistant Director, Brian Breeze, to be the Assistant Director of Safety and Security. And we got this update because we are installing a Security Command Center in the district, and you might have read about that in the paper. But this Security Command Center would be one central point of communication should there ever be a need to gather all the members of our crisis team. And I know when we say that, our minds sometimes go to our worst fears, and we think just the really bad things that can happen in safety and security. But most of the time, our crisis team, when they're gathered, they're gathered for things like weather, and they're gathered for things like power outages. They're gathered together to, whenever we need a central point for people to make decisions and then to communicate those decisions out to the rest of the district. And so, we have, I was told, something like 10 or more alarms for every building we have in District Six. And so, every one of those alarms rings somebody's phone. And what this Safety and Security Command Center would do would enable all of that to be funneled into one place and to, again, get that information out to the people that need it very quickly. So, we're extremely excited about this new Command Center, and it should be opening sometime around January of 2025. We're still waiting. It's been funded primarily with grants, and we're still waiting on one more grant. But since we got this great update from our Safety and Security Team, it just seems like a good time to say thank you to our Safety and Security Team, and not just the three gentlemen that I mentioned earlier, but all of our school resource officers, our partnerships with Greeley Police Department, Evans Police Department, and the people that keep our kids safe and secure every day. We are incredibly appreciative to all of you, and we're incredibly appreciative to our public. We have, with the passage of the 2019 bond issue, we've been able to install safe, secure vestibules in each and every one of our schools. We've been doing that for several years now, and that is actually finally complete. Now, every one of our schools has a single point of entry where you are buzzed into a vestibule, and then you're buzzed into the office. And now, the person in the office has line of sight on everybody coming in that school. And that bond issue, and our voters who passed that bond issue, have dramatically increased the security of the kids in District Six. That bond issue, as well as the MLO that passed both in '17 and, again, was that '23? '22 that we passed that again, that provided for things like our Raptor system. We cannot thank our public enough for those two measures that make the kids in this district so safe. And so, appreciate all that our Safety Team does. And with that, we will go on with the rest of our meeting. Now, I'll turn it over, Dr. Pilch, to you for your honor roll.
Thank you, President Matthews. Well, I am honored to have Vice President, Mrs. Mash, join me as a part of this Superintendent's Honor Roll tonight. We have the honor of honoring you, President Matthews, with the Notorious McGuffey Award presented by the Colorado Association of School Boards. Mrs. Mash, I'm going to let you take this from here.
Yes, so the Colorado Association of School Boards, which is the group that our board is a part of, all the boards in Colorado, each year, they call for nominations for the McGuffey Award. And the McGuffey Award honors board members who bring committed and passionate service to their board work. Some of the criteria they mention is being actively and positively engaged, going above and beyond, seeking service in the community. So, we submitted you for that award, Michael, and I thought I would just write or read to you what we wrote on your behalf. "Michael Matthews has served seven years on the Greeley Evans Board of Education. Before he was elected, he was an involved parent, serving on the District Accountability Committee and working to pass an MLO. For the past six years, he has served as the Board President, being a part of two successful MLO campaigns, the passing of a $395 million bond. He's revamped the strategic plan with his fellow board members, updated curriculum, updated safety and security, increased CTE offerings, and helped to guide the district through the COVID pandemic, as well as manage the boardroom through difficult times. Most recently, President Matthews supported our superintendent as she led the work to change the state's funding formula, speaking on behalf of our district and our students before the Colorado State Congress. Michael is calm and thoughtful, leads with grace and collaboration, and has mentored each of his fellow board members to one degree or another. He will leave a legacy of strong board leadership, innovation, and partnership when he is term limited in November of 2025." So, thank you for seven wonderful years of serving this community and for mentoring each of us here, and just your example of loving this community through the school district.
Mrs. Myers, would you like us to do a...
President Matthews, and as you know, the honoree does have an opportunity to speak if you'd like to.
Oh.
Mrs. Mash, would you try and speak?
I've been to this podium before. It's been some years ago, but I did get to speak to the board back in 2016. And I'll just say thank you. Thank you, Vice President Mash. Thank you, Dr. Pilch, for, I'm sure that you guys were instrumental in that nomination. Thank you for writing that. Those are very kind words, Natalie. And thank you to all of you, very gracious applause. So, it's been wonderful to get to lead this district. It's been such an exciting time when you list off everything and to know just that you get to be a part of something that touches the lives of so many people. And it's not just, we have 22,000, 23,000 students here, but it's not just 23,000 students. We really do touch the lives of just about everybody in this community in one way or another. And so, to get to be part of something that big that touches so many and to see so many positive improvements in so many different areas and to be part of just this time in District Six, I feel very fortunate. So, thank you all. Dr. Pilch, does that conclude your report?
Uh...
Or your, sorry, not your report, but your honor roll?
That concludes my honor roll, sir.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Thank you very much, all of you. We're moving on to the approval of our agenda, and so, we'll need a motion to approve.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second. So, any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari.
Aye.
Director Bentley.
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi.
Aye.
Director Mash.
Aye.
Director Matthews.
Aye.
Director Sullivan.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, we have our Superintendent's Report. And so, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I just want to give you some updates. As we've started school year, when we came together two weeks ago, it was the first day of school. We've now been in session for two weeks, and I've had the opportunity with others from our team to be in several schools, and it has been a beautiful start to school. Students are, teachers and other staff are energized, and our hallways are calm and engaging, and I'm just very proud of this start to the school year. I do want to share that the new practices we've implemented at the high school level around cell phones seem to be working. Staff members have commented on how much they appreciate the new cellphone practices and the expectation that cell phones are put away at high school and that everybody is doing that. It really has been a positive implementation and seems to be going well in our high schools. I want to give a shout out to our teachers and our administrators who've worked hard and diligently to make that happen, and to our parents, who I know are hearing about this at home and working to support their children at home with this policy. And of course, at elementary and middle level in our K-8 schools, I mean, there's never any cell phones out. And so, it's really been the high schools where we focus on keeping cell phones put away during instructional time while students are in the classroom. I do also want to share, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at our new website, one of you mentioned that tonight, I think that was you, Dr. Campos Spitsi, in your comments earlier that you appreciated and just how well it works. I want to encourage you to look at the new website. We did move to a new vendor with that as the old vendor changed. They were purchased out by the new vendor that we have. We've also been working on a communication tool with parents so we would have a district-wide communication tool, because I know parents are frustrated that if they have students in multiple schools or even in the same school with multiple teachers, you're hearing from them on a variety of communication tools. And so, we are striving to have one communication tool. We had really hoped to launch that in August at the start of the school year, and unfortunately, our vendor has not been able to produce. And so, we are looking to other vendors to provide that product for us, but I'm confident we'll get there in the next several weeks so that we can still do that implementation of one tool for all parents. I also want to just give a shout out to those of you board members who were able to come to the District Leadership Team meeting this past Wednesday. We kicked off our District Leadership Team meeting for the year this past week. We had to postpone it a little because I was out with a death in my family, but we had an Olympic theme and had over 120 of our administrators from our non-charter and charter schools who were able to attend. And I took them on a walk down the memory lane of the last nine years because I'm starting my 10th year in District Six. We thought it would be very informative, but also good for us to look at where we've been and all that we've accomplished and the challenges that we faced and the challenges we've overcome and the challenges we still have. And then, we talked about what does this mean now for Year 10 and tying it back to that Olympic theme. We had folks talk about their superpower and what they do to make a difference. And one of the things we said in the room that day, well, we said a lot of things, but I reminded them that everything that happens in an organization that is working is because of relationships, and everything that is not working is because of relationships. It's something I've said throughout my career. And then, I also reminded them that we lead from the seat we are in, and we've gotten our robust strategic plan, and we passed Mill Levy overrides and a bond issue because people have led from the seat they are in, and that's how we've made the difference. And then, one of the staff members said that one of the things that they've heard me say is, "We are educating children out of poverty." And I was so pleased to have one of our assistant principals remind us of that, that we are, we are educating children out of poverty, and we have big work to do. And we know it's not perfect. We know we still have a lot of work to do, but I know we have the team in place to do that work. And I'm just so grateful for your support as Board of Education members and so tremendously appreciative.
Thank you, President Matthews. Well, I am honored to have Vice President Mrs. Mash join me as a part of this Superintendent's Honor Roll tonight. We have the honor of honoring you, President Matthews, with the Notorious McGuffey Award presented by Colorado Association of School Boards. Mrs. Mash, I'm going to let you take this from here.
Yes, so the Colorado Association of School Boards, which is the group that our board is a part of, all the boards in Colorado, each year they call for nominations for the McGuffey Award. And the McGuffey Award honors board members who bring committed and passionate service to their board work. Some of the criteria they mention is being actively and positively engaged, going above and beyond, seeking service in the community. So we submitted you for that award, Michael, and I thought I would just write or read to you what we wrote on your behalf. "Michael Matthews has served seven years on the Greeley-Evans Board of Education. Before he was elected, he was an involved parent, serving on the District Accountability Committee and working to pass an MLO. For the past six years, he has served as the Board President, being a part of two successful MLO campaigns, the passing of a $395 million bond. He's revamped the strategic plan with his fellow board members, updated curriculum, updated safety and security, increased CTE offerings, and helped to guide the district through the COVID pandemic, as well as manage the boardroom through difficult times. Most recently, President Matthews supported our superintendent as she led the work to change the state's funding formula, speaking on behalf of our district and our students before the Colorado State Congress. Michael is calm and thoughtful, leads with grace and collaboration, and has mentored each of his fellow board members to one degree or another. He will leave a legacy of strong board leadership, innovation, and partnership when he is term limited in November of 2025." So, thank you for seven wonderful years of serving this community and for mentoring each of us here, and just your example of loving this community through the school
Mrs. Myers, would you like us to do a...
President Matthews, and as you know, the honoree does have an opportunity to speak if you'd like to.
Oh.[169.65][169.65][laughter]
Mrs. Mash, can you try and speak?
I think you should feel what it's like to be at the podium.
I've been to this podium before. It's been some years ago, but I did get to speak to the board back in 2016. And I'll just say thank you. Thank you, Vice President Mash, thank you, Dr. Pilch, for, I'm sure that you guys were instrumental in that nomination. Thank you for writing that. Those are very kind words, Natalie, and thank you to all of you. Very gracious applause. So it's been a wonderful, wonderful to get to lead this district. It's been such an exciting time when you list off everything and to know just that you get to be a part of something that is, that touches the lives of so many people. And it's not just, we have 22,000, 23,000 students here, but it's not just 23,000 students. We really do touch the lives of just about everybody in this community in one way or another. And so to get to be part of something that big that touches so many and to see so many positive improvements in so many different areas and to be part of just this time in District Six, I feel very fortunate. Dr. Pilch, does that conclude your report?
Uh...
Or your, not, sorry, not your report, but your honor roll?
That concludes my honor roll, sir.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Thank you very much, all of you. We're moving on to the approval of our agenda, and so we'll need a motion to approve.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley-Evans School District Six approves the agenda as presented.
Second. So any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Next, we have our Superintendent's Report. And so, Dr. Pilch, I'll give it back to you.
Thank you, President Matthews. I just want to give you some updates. As we've started school year, when we came together two weeks ago, it was the first day of school. We've now been in session for two weeks, and I've had the opportunity with others from our team to be in several schools, and it has been a beautiful start to school. Students are, teachers and other staff are energized, and our hallways are calm and engaging, and I'm just very proud of this start to the school year. I do want to share that the new practices we've implemented at the high school level around cell phones seem to be working. Staff members have commented on how much they appreciate the new cellphone practices and the expectation that cell phones are put away at high school and that everybody is doing that. It really has been a positive, a positive implementation and seems to be going well in our high schools. I want to give a shout out to our teachers and our administrators who've worked hard and diligently to make that happen, and to our parents, who I know are hearing about this at home and working to support their children at home with this policy. And of course, at elementary and middle level in our K-8 schools, I mean, there's never any cell phones out. And so it's really been the high schools where we focus on keeping cell phones put away during instructional time while students are in the classroom. I do also want to share, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at our new website, one of you mentioned that tonight, I think that was you, Dr. Campos Spitsy, in your comments earlier that you appreciated and just how well it works. I want to encourage you to look at the new website. We did move to a new vendor with that as the old vendor changed. They were purchased out by the new vendor that we have. We've also been working on a communication tool with parents, so we would have a district-wide communication tool, because I know parents are frustrated that if they have students in multiple schools, or even in the same school with multiple teachers, you're hearing from them on a variety of communication tools. And so we are striving to have one communication tool. We had really hoped to launch that in August at the start of the school year, and unfortunately, our vendor has not been able to produce. And so we are looking to other vendors to provide that product for us, but I'm confident we'll get there in the next several weeks so that we can still do that implementation of one tool for all parents. I also want to just give a shout out to those of you board members who were able to come to the district leadership team meeting this past Wednesday. We kicked off our district leadership team meeting for the year this past week. We had to postpone it a little because I was out with a death in my family, but we had an Olympic theme and had over 120 of our administrators from our non-charter and charter schools who were able to attend. And I took them on a walk kind of down the last, memory lane of the last nine years because I'm starting my 10th year in District Six. We thought it would be very, not only informative, but also good for us to look at where we've been and all that we've accomplished and the challenges that we faced and the challenges we've overcome and the challenges we still have. And then we talked about what does this mean now for Year 10 and tying it back to that Olympic theme. We had folks talk about their superpower and what they do to make a difference. And one of the things we said in the room that day, well, we said a lot of things, but I reminded them that everything that happens in an organization that is working is because of relationships, and everything that is not working is because of relationships. It's something I've said throughout my career. And then I also reminded them that we lead from the seat we are in, and we've gotten our robust strategic plan, and we passed Mill Levy overrides and a bond issue because people have led from the seat they are in, and that's how we've made the difference. And then, one of the staff members said that, one of the things that they've heard me say is, "We are educating children out of poverty." And I was so pleased to have one of our assistant principals remind us of that, that we are. We are educating children out of poverty, and we have big work to do, and we know it's not perfect. We know we still have a lot of work to do, but I know we have the team in place to do that work. And I'm just so grateful for your support as Board of Education members and so tremendously appreciative of the work of our district leadership team and all of the educators and other staff who they support. So thank you, President Matthews, and that is my report.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Pilch. Next on our agenda tonight is our I-2030 SLA Goal One CTE and internship update. I'd like to invite our CTE team, those that are presenting tonight up to the podium. And, Dr. Pilch, is there anything you need to say by introduction, or shall we just hand it over to Mr. Asmus?
Let's turn it over.
Welcome, Mr. Asmus.
Thank you. Good evening, President Matthews, members of the board, and Dr. Pilch. My name is Anthony Asmus, and I am the Assistant Superintendent of Secondary and K-8 School Leadership and also Post-Secondary Readiness. Due to a family emergency, Jen Chilling, who is our Director of Career and Technical Education, is not with us tonight, but we do have Jordan Carlberg, our Career Pathway Specialist, and Nelson Rodriguez, our Business and Community Partnership Director and/or Administrator, and we are here to share with you some information around our career pathways. We are very proud of this work. This Innovation 2030 presentation captures an increase in internship numbers, an increase in pathway opportunities and participation, an expansion to the elementary for career readiness, and post-secondary opportunities and support. We thank the board and Dr. Pilch for your vision and support, and as always, we thank our voters in Greeley-Evans for supporting the MLO. We really can't do this work without them. As always, this work is grounded in our mission and vision to prepare our students to be career and college-ready and ready to succeed in tomorrow's world. More than any other work, our career pathways is supported by all four focus areas. Student learning and achievement by aligning credits to real-world and on-the-job experiences; strengthening partnerships by increasing parent and student awareness of career pathways and how to navigate our educational system; climate and culture by embracing diversity and supporting the opportunity for all students to follow their passion; operational and organizational effectiveness where we align resources to provide career pathway opportunities at each school and at our Career and Technical Education Center. For this work, our goal is to provide a personalized learning experience to motivate students and to ensure on-time graduation, and we monitor that by 2026, 90% of our students have a career or college plan of study. We do this by following a few action steps, a few of the many. Few of these increase student engagement and career pathways that respond to current industry and business and community needs; further develop career pathways by providing a continuum for student post-secondary goals; and provide options for all students to earn industry certificates for graduation guidelines and ensure alignment with workforce demands. I'm a little bit off there. Like to do a congratulations to Carly Engel. She couldn't be here tonight. She's coaching, just like many of our teachers. They do double duty, so she's doubled up coaching tonight. But she is our Family and Consumer Sciences teacher at Northridge and was a recipient of the CTE Teacher of the Year, and she was honored with that this summer. We were here last year when she was honored as the New Teacher of the Year, and then she went on to get the CTE Teacher of the Year. So we are just fortunate to have her in our district, and congratulations to Carly. We're always proud to say that in District Six, we have 14 academies with 29 pathways available to our students that are offered across the school district. In the development of these academies, it was our goal for students to find their interest, whether that be in the Scholastic or Leadership Academy, to Education, or Advanced Manufacturing Pathway. Students even have the opportunity to stay in their home high school but take pathway classes in other schools, which we'll share a little bit about that tonight. Over the past three years, enrollment has continued to increase on our CTE programs with just shy of 1,000 students more enrolled this past year than in 2223. As a team, we feel the increase reflects our focused work on educating students and parents on our CTE programs. We will continue to work on increasing numbers by providing program information to our current students and families through family engagement nights, student events such as our eighth-grade expo, and ongoing communication in multiple languages. Just a few of the celebrations there. I'll turn this next part over to Jordan Carlberg.
Thank you, Mr. Asmus. To start the school year, Health Science Academy at Greeley Central has expanded its offering to students for the opportunity to earn a Nurse Aid Certificate program or a Nurse Aid Certificate through Morgan Community College. In one semester, students are able to earn a basic life support CPR certificate and a Nurse Aid Certificate, preparing them for their next steps as they pursue a career in healthcare industry. This opportunity is also available to all District Six juniors and seniors. Courses are offered during zero hour and first hour, which helps reduce scheduling conflicts. Additionally, the STEM Academy at Northridge High School has expanded to include the project Lead the Way Aerospace Engineering. This course will deepen the skills and knowledge of engineering students in context of atmospheric and space flight. Students will explore the fundamentals of flight and airspace as they bring the concepts to life by designing and testing components related to flight. At the District Six CTE Center, we have both first and second-year students this year. We've hired a second teacher in the Cosmetology Program, allowing that more students to access one of our most popular pathways. The other pathways are also included Teacher Prep, Cyber Security, Welding, Construction with an emphasis in Electrical. Students attending the CTE Center earn a total of four credits per year, two of which are CT Electives and two align with the appropriate core credits which have been crosswalked to each pathway. We are head of most districts in this work, and we will present in the National AECEP Conference in October with our post-secondary partner Ames Community College. Students and families interested in attending classes within one of the pathways offered at the CTE Center should look for applications to open in November. Will be closed at the beginning of January, and acceptance letters will go out in February for attendance of the '25-'26 school year. Post-secondary pathways. It is my pleasure to share with you a few of our post-secondary opportunities we have available for our students, starting with PTEC or Pathway into Technology Early College and High School. Model is unique, an educational model allowing students in high schools, or allowing students in high school to earn a high school diploma alongside an associate's in applied science while gaining relevant work experience. This slide, I've got a lot of notes in it. I'm breaking down all of our post-secondary pathways, so bear with me. Students enrolled in PTEC program will complete four years of high school, enroll in both high school and college-level courses. They have the opportunity to finish their associate's degree in a fifth and sixth year at Ames Community College at no cost to the families. There are currently 12 students enrolled in their fifth year at Ames Community College. Similar to PTEC, Teacher Recruitment Education and Preparation, or TREP or TRP, is for qualified students interested in becoming a future educator that have completed four years of high school to attend Ames Community College for two additional years at no cost to families. Currently, there are two students finishing their sixth year at Ames Community College. Students that have completed a minimum of nine college credits while in high school are eligible to participate in ASCENT. Participating students are eligible to register for post-secondary courses at no cost to families for one additional year after high school completion. We currently have 15 students participating in ASCENT this year. PTEC, TRP, and ASCENT are all programs that are extension of concurrent enrollment, concurrent enrollment where Path Forward is a scholarship for low-income students that graduate early to first be used as tuition and fees, but also can be used to purchase textbooks, equipment, and transportation. Eligible students that graduate at the end of three years will receive a one-time scholarship of $4,113.38, and a student that graduates at the end of three and a half years will receive a one-time scholarship of $2,468. There are currently 221 students last year that were eligible for the Path Forward Scholarship. As a career pathway team, we meet regularly with students interested in participating in these programs to develop post-secondary plans, and in doing so, we have the opportunity to hear a few of their testimonies. For example, a high school senior last year was struggling to keep his grades up, learned about the ASCENT program, decided to register for, and then successfully completed college credit, college coursework, graduated on time, and now is currently participating in ASCENT. Another student was a senior in the Cosmetology Program last year. At the start of the year, she was unsure about college, and by the end of the school year, she learned that cosmetology wasn't her thing, but she loved serving people, and so now she is participating in ASCENT, enrolled in pre-nursing courses at Ames Community We have a wide variety of opportunities for students to explore careers, and I'd like to highlight a few of those opportunities. There are now currently 21 Smart Labs within our elementary, middle, and K-8 schools. This has been made possible through support of the Success Foundation and the Mill Levy Override. Smart Labs provide an opportunity through project-based learning for students to explore careers and career aptitudes within an emphasis in STEM. Additionally, students are encouraged to connect skills learned through Smart Lab projects to the career pathway courses that are offered within our D6 high schools. Other career pathway explorations include Get Into the Guts of Healthcare, which connects eighth-grade students to local healthcare partners to learn about various careers, as well as several of our industry-sponsored events like HP Days, Construction Con, and Manufacturing Rocks. Starting this year, the district is moving forward with Zello, which is a career college readiness platform that is replacing Naviance. It has implemented K-12 for students to explore careers and career aptitudes. The CTO Mobile App, it's been a process, but it is done. It is fully furnished. Middle school students will have the opportunity to participate in one-hour lessons to explore career pathways offered within D6, and then lessons will be facilitated by CTE teacher, high school student leads through their CTSOs. District Six will host our Second Annual Career Readiness Conference on February 7 at Ames Community College. Students will hear from guest speakers, participate in workshops to further develop their career readiness skills. Workshops will be facilitated by local community partners. And I will now pass over the last few slides to Nelson Rodriguez.
Not as tall as Jordan, so just need to adjust the mic. Hi and good evening. I always get excited for this opportunity to share with you the work that we get to do in District Six to support college and career readiness. Work-based learning is one way that we are helping students prepare for the future, and I want to help define work-based learning since this is a term that we use often in career and technical education. Work-based learning could really be thought of as a continuum of activities that are offered by educators or by industry partners that provide online, or hands-on learning and real-world experience. Some of these activities are really meant to increase career awareness, so some of the activities that Jordan just highlighted are really meant to help students learn about different occupations, while other work-based learning activities are geared towards spending more time with industry partners through on-the-job training or shadowing experiences. This is where internships and apprenticeships come into play, and I'm excited to highlight some of the work that we're doing in that area. So to start with this new CNA program that we just launched at Greeley Central, we offer a health seminar class, and as part of this health seminar class, students get the opportunity to shadow different healthcare and education settings. We have a good number of partners in the community that have agreed to host our students on a weekly basis, and so some of these partners include the city's Active Adult Center, ADEO, Banner Health, and the School of Nursing. And this really is just an opportunity for students to get to see the day-to-day operation of these organizations and learn about the service that they provide to the community. We also have another job shadow opportunity through the Electrical CTE Program at the CTE Center. We actually have a partnership with our own District Six facilities where students in this program get to shadow our journeymen electricians. So they get to see the type of work orders that our facilities department gets on a daily basis, and they go out to different sites across our school district to learn about what an electrician does for our school district. You should have printed handouts in front of you or as part of your packet, but I'm really excited to share with you this new partnership that we have with JBS Corporate. This is something that we started working on this summer and are just now in a position to launch this for students across District Six. So we are launching an apprenticeship program with JBS Corporate, and it's really geared towards students that are interested in careers related to agriculture, culinary arts, business, and STEM. JBS Corporate has 10 different departments that have committed to hiring our students, and some of their departments include engineering, research and development, international logistics, sales, accounting, and even their onsite cafe. And so we're really excited that they want to partner with us, and I think it speaks volumes that as a district, we have so many pathways that a large employer could tap, you know, tap us and say, "Hey, we want to work with you. We want to be intentional about the partnerships that we develop." And so this is available to high school juniors and seniors in District Six. They will pay $17 an hour for all of these positions, and so we are just getting around to advertising this to students, to families, counselors, and teachers. Tomorrow, I'm actually hosting a series of student roundtables at several of our schools where we are going to bring JBS staff to come and talk to students in these pathways about this opportunity. So we're really excited about this new apprenticeship because it not only provides students with on-the-job training, but the apprenticeship model also provides mentorship. So all the students that are hired through this program are going to be assigned a mentor at JBS that will coach them throughout the experience. And the hope for the employer that hosts apprenticeships is that they convert to hires, you know, that they are able to hire the students after the apprenticeship. So I'm sure we'll be sharing more information as this program gets underway. I believe you all are most familiar with internships because this is a longstanding program we've had here in District Six. But here at District Six, we facilitate internships for high school juniors that are transitioning into their junior year, or to their senior year. And really, the purpose of this program is to help students gain meaningful work experience that allows them to explore their career path and then also develop some meaningful skills that they could carry with them in the future. All of our internships are 150 hours, and they're paid at least minimum wage. These internships are paid either by the employer directly or through District Six. We do have the support of the Success Foundation. They help us raise money to help support this program, and then we also utilize MLO funding to help sustain this program. These are some photos that we took this summer, and so in the summer, I get to conduct site visits and go and meet with as many students as I can and with their supervisors, and I usually bring our district photographer so that he could help capture these moments. But I like these images because they showcase the variety of industries that we are working with when it comes to internships. So students who are interested in veterinary science, healthcare, electrical, welding, IT, cybersecurity, or education, we are proud to offer various opportunities for students to explore their career path. This past summer, we had a total of 170 paid internships that were supported by 45 unique employers in northern Colorado, and I feel like I say this every time I stand at this podium, but really, this past summer was the highest participation we've ever had in our program's history. And you'll see through this chart that over the last few years, we have seen significant and constant growth in this program. If we look even at 2021, when we were offering 88 internships, I mean, 88 is still a high volume of internships to facilitate, and in the last couple of years, we've nearly doubled the number of internships that are available to students. And I think what's important to highlight here is that as we expand career pathways, we are purposeful about industry partnerships and making sure that we are aligning our pathways to these type of experiences, and we're very fortunate here in Greeley-Evans to have the support of our community to be able to offer these type of experiences to students. I've included here, for your reference, just a breakdown by building, and so those 170 students are not coming, don't come just from our comprehensive high schools. We also have students from D6 Online, Early College, Gap, Jefferson, and University High School. And so I think it's important to just know that across the school district, we are offering these opportunities to students. Here's what we are learning about the students that participate in our program. For slightly over half of these students, the internship is their very first job experience. Many of you have heard me say this before, but I really do think it's an honor that as a school district, we get to facilitate this milestone for students. So through this internship, they are learning what it's like to apply for a job, interview for a position, even completing higher paperwork. This is real-world experience that they're going to run into after they finish their time with District Six. time with District 6. Eighty percent of these students have taken a CTE course, and work-based learning internships are a critical component to our CTE program, and I think that's reflected in these numbers where our CTE programs are encouraging students to participate in this program. I'll jump to the last bullet. Close to 90% of our students have indicated that they have a better understanding of their career goals as a result of this internship. For many of our students, this internship helps confirm what they've known for a long time, but for some students, the internship exposes them to a new occupation, to a new field, which I think is significant. And then for some students, the internship lets them know that the career they thought they wanted all along is actually not for them, and we think that that is a wonderful thing for them to realize while they're in high school and what an honor it is that we get to facilitate that for them. Just for quick reference, I wanted to share the program timeline for summer internships. Though the internships happen in the summer, this really is a year-round process. So I am recruiting businesses throughout the year, and in the fall semester, I work with counselors and teachers and administrators to recruit students. And we often have way more students than we have positions for. Last year, we had over 300 students apply to our summer internship program. In the spring is where we really focus our energy on resume-writing workshops, mock interviews, and as Jordan just mentioned, we're planning a career readiness conference in February. So all of that is meant to help students prepare for summer internships. And throughout the spring, we conduct an internship placement process where I get our counselors and teachers together, and we place students into internships based on the student's career interest and the needs of the employer. And then towards the end of the spring semester, the employers get to interview the students and ultimately determine if they want to hire them for the summer internship program. Most of our internships start right around Memorial Day. I always bring a video. And to conclude my portion of this presentation, I do want to share a video that highlights a recent internship experience of one of our students. The student featured in this video is Veronica Reyes. She is a student from Northridge High School. She's part of the STEM program and is also enrolled in the CNA program at Greeley Central High School. And so I'll let you learn about her through this video.
Everyone who lives here, their lives changed in a split second.
I think that this internship has definitely helped me let go of some of those fears that I had for the future. I wasn't sure if this was for sure the right field for me. However, working with these residents, I feel more at peace knowing that this is the field that I want to go into, and I love working with people. I'm currently an intern at the ADEO Center, and it's a residency for people who have had brain injuries, and they come here to live after those brain injuries. And what I do here, my role is to participate in activities with all the residents and kind of be more of like a support for them, be someone that they can recognize every day and just get to know.
She's really done a great job with staying engaged with the residents and being available. Coming in every day with a smile on her face, I don't think I ever see her stop smiling. And it just really seems like she enjoys being here, which is what I love to see and what the residents love to see.
By taking that step forward and asking them questions about themselves and then opening up to them, they've been able to open up to me and get more comfortable, and then they've been more willing to do different activities with me that some of them weren't willing to do in the beginning.
I've seen her really break out of her shell and interacting with the residents, getting residents who don't normally participate in activities to participate. We got one who has never done crafting group to do crafting group, which was a huge step.
I think my favorite activity is probably Uno, just because they all love to interact with Uno, and they all get very competitive, which is very fun and enjoyable to do with them. I learned that I love to work with people and getting to know them on a deeper level and help them in any way I can has made me realize that I would love a career in medicine where I can be helping someone every day and get to know the people that I'm working with.
As you can see, District 6 truly is engaged in career and college readiness, and we have this work embedded all the way K through 12 with Zello and some career aptitude type of questions and projects, and in our high schools with academies and career pathways, and then internships and our apprenticeships. And so we are, I think we're just, we're just starting with this work and getting more and more students every year involved. So our next steps, continue to support middle school students by creating awareness and exploration of high school opportunities. Recruit and retain highly, high-quality CTE teachers. Sometimes that's a problem, and we're looking for one right now in our cybersecurity program, which I think we have leads, but you know, sometimes when we lose one, it does take some time to find another one, and we work hard to keep the ones that we have. Expand post-secondary programming, cultivate additional industry partners for work-based learning, and CTE advisory boards. And so this is very exciting work, and a lot of great data were shared with you tonight, and we would love to answer any questions that you might have.
But we have a few coming in. I'll start though with one and for each of you, Nelson, Jordan. What are, you've given us a lot, and we've certainly seen both programs, both our internships and our CTE program grow dramatically over the last few years. What are you most proud of and/or what's most exciting about the future? What is on the horizon that you're most excited about?
Thank you, President Matthews, for that question. Really, what I'm proud of is that as a school district, we are really helping our students be college and career-ready, and that is, of course, part of our mission, but I think that every day, we have the opportunity to help transform lives. And you hear through these videos and other testimonials that are not included in this video that doing an internship or a job shadow or being enrolled in a CTE program really helps students find purpose, and I think that that's, that's an incredible thing that we get to do and something that I'm most proud of. Certainly, the numbers, as they continue to increase, I'm proud of that, but I want to make sure that we continue to offer quality programming as we do expand the opportunities available. I'm particularly proud of the partnerships that we have as a school district, that we have such a supportive community that is investing in our students and providing these opportunities that are transformative. So, Jordan?
And equally, thank you for that question. What I'm most proud of is the work that District 6 has done around all the career pathways. Our concurrent enrollment numbers are increasing, our CTE pathways are increasing. And like my why to my work is maybe not as eloquent as Dr. Pilch said earlier, but my why is like education is a great equalizer. Like, once someone is educated, like the world is their wish tier. And so like between whether it's our construction, electrical, our P-Tech pathways, or all the career pathway work that's happening at all of our high schools is that our students are getting above and beyond what several students in our neighboring districts are getting, and I am, I'm just so proud of that work that our district is doing. Looking forward to, I'm excited about the work that we're doing down in the middle school level. I think I shared with the board several years ago, but fifth grade is like the target grade to start exposing students to career pathways. That is an area that we're continuing to grow on, but I'm excited about the work that we're going to be doing in Smart Labs. I'm excited about the work about the Discovery Lab. I'm excited about bringing all that good work that we've done at the secondary level and up into the post-secondary, back down into our middle and K8s and elementary, so.
Thank you both. We have a few questions now. Dr. Campus-Pitzy?
So I know you got to say that you guys are proud of growing the number of partnerships and the number of summer internships from 88 to 170, doubling that number, but we know that that doesn't happen just by itself, so thank you, thank you, thank you for all the hard work your team has put in to building those partnerships with our community. And let's see, I guess I just wanted to share, kind of jumping off of what Jordan just said, that the kids here are so lucky, right? Like, I reflect back on just my experience as a student. I knew I wanted to be a doctor from the time I was like in second grade. It was, I don't remember ever wanting to be something different than a doctor, and I never had anything remote to this kind of opportunity in high school. And even in college, as a pre-med student, there was such a lottery for those opportunities for shadowing and internships. It was a big school, and there was a lot of pre-meds. I, in the, in the whole time I was in college, I never got to shadow a doctor. I got to shadow a physical therapist and a nutritionist, but never a doctor. So it wasn't until after graduating college. So just to highlight how special this is, how meaningful these experiences can be for our students, and just really proud of the work you guys are doing.
Mr. Azari?
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure that I read the slide correctly. One of the first slides, it showed that the program increased its student number from last year to this year by over 1,000.
Almost 1,000.
So what do you attribute, you covered some of this in your presentation, but what do you attribute to me that is tremendous growth? And will that keep happening, and are we prepared for that growth?
Yeah, a few of those are attributed to the new programs that we started, but then also what I, what I really enjoyed was the family engagement nights that we had, and so really invited the parents in. We had a few last year where we invited parents in, we provided healthcare, we provided pizza, like we just tried to find every way to get them in, and we just talked about the opportunities that we have in our district for this. And if you didn't know that you can take classes and our college credit and do all of these things, then come to this, and we will, we will take your children, not take them forever, we'll watch your children, and we, and we will feed you, right? And, and we had, and we presented this in multiple languages through our technology. So it's really a combination of continuing to grow our programs and, and increase the communication out to our community. And Megan has assured me the dollars are there. And I'm just, I just want to say it out here in front of, in public, right, Megan? But yes, sir.
Mr. Bentley?
Yeah, first off, thank you guys for all that. I kind of have a unique perspective up here as a board member and as a business owner who's participating in this program, and I just kind of wanted to tell everybody, you know, from my point of view as a business owner, the program was, was really enjoyable. Actually, it was, it was really cute to read their resumes. Some of them pretty small, but they, they did, they did, they made a good effort to make it a real resume to the best of their experiences. Some of them even had some fun with it, it seemed like. So from that point on, and I didn't do the interviews, but once they were in the building and working, they, you know, it was, I made sure that we weren't doing this as a charity, right? I wanted them to, to be productive and trying to, you know, get that feeling that, hey, you need to do something here that isn't school anymore, right? So all of them jumped in. We had to get a little creative at certain times, we had to, you know, move stuff. And so it wasn't just, they didn't get to watch, you know, like in a welding shop that everybody wants to watch the welder work, and that's, I don't, I don't make any money off of anybody watching somebody else work. So, but they were, they're all very willing, and it seemed to me that they're, you know, the punctuality, the soft skills, the work ethic was instilled or communicated to them prior to them getting to me, so I didn't really have any issues there. And, you know, I would just like to, you know, challenge any other business owners that have heard of this or might hear of this, that, you know, it is worth it. It's, it's, and it, you know, in the trades, at least, you know, it's the same reason you're having trouble finding a CTE teacher because it's short supply right now. We spent the last 20 years pushing four-year colleges down everybody's throat, and there is a whole section of kids that that doesn't fit. You know, some of the most successful people I know basically cheated to pass high school or were in special education classes in high school, and so, but when they get out in the real world, that doesn't always prove success or failure. So it's really exciting for me to see that we are doing this, this work, splitting and focusing on everything instead of just college readiness. I wanted to maybe see if you guys had any insights into what's next? Is there any more expansion, any more programs that might excite people to look into or maybe even growth at the CTE Center?
We're always looking for expansion and like what Nelson was mentioning, being strategic with our expansion, with our community partners. I don't know, short of the ones we mentioned tonight, if we have any like in the pipe, ready to start rolling out next school year, but, but yeah, we're always, we're always interested in expanding our pathways, so.
I might say right now, we are, we have a strong internship program, but we're looking for more opportunities for apprenticeships. This opportunity with JBS is very exciting, and to have our students go to school for part of the day and then apply what they've learned at another job site and get paid to do that, I think this apprenticeship idea is, is going to be something that might grow next.
Is there any way to maybe look into a CDL-type pathway? It's kind of tricky with them not being of age and trucking companies and insurance and stuff, but that's, the federal government changed the standards, and as you guys know, it's really hard to get one now.
Yeah, I like that, and we've also talked about automotive too and where that might be next. And so there's, those are very top priority industries that, that could use that work, especially CDL, and then I think the automotive mechanic pathway might be out there too.
Mr. Norwood?
Nelson, I remember a couple of years ago, you and I sitting down and brainstorming some businesses that we could internship kids. Remember those days?
Yeah.
A day or two? Obviously, it's expanded tenfold since then, and it's really great to see this. And as a former CTE teacher, I just want to say how happy it makes me to see the expansion of all the programs for these kids, the opportunities to maybe not even, well, to maybe go into the field, but some of the things that they can do that can save themselves some money in their home projects, putting windows in. I remember watching them put windows in. What a great opportunity for these kids. And I just want to say too that I had the opportunity working with one of the students at the Active Adult Center this summer, and I think it was really a great experience for not only those of us that worked there, but for her as well. So, you know, thank you guys for putting, putting people like that down there. It was, it was fun to work with.
Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
Well, first off, I just want to applaud you guys for all these efforts because not only are you providing the opportunity for the kids to explore their different career fields and whatnot and help find their niche and what's going to work for them, but you're also offsetting a lot of the college costs. And we know right now with the explosion of the cost of college and the economy, just like, you know, we have issues with people being unable to pay for that. So I want to applaud you because this is huge. But Jordan, I do have a question actually for you, and if you could go back on this, and I apologize, but on that Ascent Scholarship, is this a scholarship for the fifth and sixth year that's being offered through the Bright Futures Scholarship? Or is, and is, or is this just strictly for the kids that are doing the CTE through our program here?
Yeah, so P-Tech, TREP, and Ascent are all expansions of concurrent enrollment. And so students, they have to complete high school. They have to have four years of high school under their belt, but they don't, they get a high school completion certificate, they stay with on our IC books, and they're actually paid through by concurrent enrollment. And so just like a student that would be a junior in high school going to Ames Community College, it's the same, same program, it's just expanded into their fifth or sixth year, depending on the program. Bright Futures is a scholarship that students apply, and actually, as we mentioned about what's in the works, my colleague, he's not here tonight, but Albert Malinato, he's actually working with Bright Futures to see if students who are participating in these fifth and sixth-year high school programs could still be eligible for Bright Futures. Because as it stands, the students have to be high school graduates, complete graduates to participate in Bright Futures.
Okay, so the, all those programs you mentioned are available for all kids, not just the, through the CTE program?
Correct, correct. The only ones that are unique are the, Ascent is for any student that has nine college credits on their transcript prior to high school completion. P-Tech or any students that participate in either advanced manufacturing or construction management class prior to high school graduation. And then T-RAP or TRAP, students have to complete one concurrent enrollment class that's within the education pathway prior to high school completion. So it's any student with So it's any student within the pathway. They just have to be actively participating in concurrent enrollment, at least their senior year, to continue on to that fifth and or sixth year.
Okay, I work with a lot of kids trying to help them find scholarships and whatnot when I'll sit down and work with parents and students. Where would I find all of that? Because that is a lot of information.
Yeah, so on our website, under Families, and then go to the Career Pathways or Career and College Readiness, I believe it's actually titled. And then it'll list out P-Tech, TRAP, and Ascent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And then just to add to that, these students are considered on-time graduates. And so it is, they're completed as graduates or counted as graduates. And then we have a staff member that tracks them for the next two years too, just to make sure they're successful. So we don't just give them this opportunity and then you're on your own, but we actually have somebody who checks in with them, helps them prepare for the next semester, make sure they have everything they need, and we support them even their fifth and sixth year, but they are counted as on-time graduates.
So do they actually, I'm sorry, do they actually get to graduate and walk with their class or do they have to hold out? Because I know in, like where my brothers went to school in Morgan, they weren't able to walk, they had to wait until they got that fifth and sixth year done.
So they, by all accounts, they are high school graduates. They do the ceremony, they get their cap and gown, they do the graduation party with friends and family. The only catch, if you will, is that they get a completion certificate on the day of their graduation, and then they go another year or two years is when they actually get their diploma. So by all accounts, they are high school graduates. It's just on the backend on how we're funding their, their college credit, so.
Any other questions from board members or comments from board members? Guys, I would just say again, thank you for the great work that you have been doing and continue to do in these areas. And we're so excited. And thank you for the presentation tonight. Next on our agenda is our public participation. As a board, we welcome the comments of community members, and we dedicate a portion of each business meeting to provide an opportunity for the community to present brief comments. All speakers are limited to two minutes for comments. Our board members typically will not respond, but we may ask our district staff to do so. All written testimony or handouts must be submitted to our board secretary, Ms. Amy Lemon. We ask all speakers and those attendants, in attendance, to conduct themselves in a dignified, non-disruptive manner, cheering, snapping, clapping, and other distractions are not permitted. Anyone who disturbs order may be required to sit down or to leave the boardroom. Speakers are responsible for their own speech, and all remarks must be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through twelfth-grade students. The board is committed to providing a safe environment where all members of the school community are treated with dignity and respect, and we expect all speakers to exercise their speech rights responsibly. With that said and read, our first, and I think our only speaker tonight, is Ms., I'm sorry, it's loading, Maria Foster.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, President Matthews, members of the board, Superintendent Pilch. I really enjoyed that presentation. I love coming to these meetings because I learn a lot and almost makes me wish I was a teenager again, but not quite. So I think it's really exciting to see all the opportunities that we have for our students. And I also saw the article about the bilingual program getting started at Meeker, I believe. And I just, I'm looking forward to more updates on that. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for students. It's so much easier to learn a second language when you're young. And I, studies that I have seen shown that once you learn a second language, whenever you learn it, it's easier to go on and learn even more languages. And in the world today, I think there's a need to be able to be multilingual if possible and culturally conversant. And so I think all those things are not, not just that they would be useful here in this community, but they could be useful wherever any of our students might go and whatever pathways they might take. So, and I'll applaud for all the apprenticeships and CTE programs, and I think they're just wonderful opportunities because not every pathway is for every student. And some kids are just not going to be interested in academics, which doesn't mean they're not intelligent, capable people. That's just not where their abilities lie. And so we need to be able to provide opportunities for them to see themselves in other careers and other positions in the community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Foster. Next on our agenda tonight is our consent agenda, and we'll need a motion to move forward. I move that the Board of Education's Greeley Evans School District Six approves the items as presented on the consent agenda and authorizes the officers to sign any and all contracts.
Second.
Thank you both. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? There doesn't appear to be any, so Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. Finally, on our agenda tonight is a second read and adoption of policy ACA name changes. Again, this is an action item that will need a motion.
I move that the Board of Education of Greeley Evans School District Six adopts policy ACA name changes as presented.
Second. Thank you both. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? I'll remind everyone, this is a second read, so we, we've already seen this once, but we view that at one board meeting and then wait for the next board meeting to make any action. And so I don't see any discussion on this one. Ms. Lemon, will you give us a vote, please?
Director Azari?
Aye.
Director Bentley?
Aye.
Director Campos Spitsi?
Aye.
Director Mash?
Aye.
Director Matthews?
Aye.
Director Norwood?
Aye.
Director Sullivan?
Nay.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you, Ms. Lemon. That is all the business that we have tonight. Thank you for joining us.